All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the joint meeting of the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, in the Veterans Room, 6:00 PM. Uh, Rokol, Councilor Marcati is here. Councilor, uh, Councilor Dow.
Present.
Is present. Uh, Steve Lozo.
Present.
And Kevin Spring.
Present.
And Councilor Stees is absent. So, uh, Agenda Item Number Three, Approve and Appoint, Approve Joint DPW Town Council Meeting Minutes of January 6th, 2023. Everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yeah. So move. So move again.
Yeah. Look okay?
Sorry to interrupt you, but this gentleman at the back said he had a meeting with Gus Stees. He's from Worcester.
That'll be after this meeting.
Is Gus gonna show up?
Yeah, it's after this meeting.
Okay, I'm just asking to see him now.
That's fine. Thank you.
It'll be after the meeting.
This meeting, it'll be right in here, after the, after this meeting.
After this meeting.
It'll be in here.
In this room. In this room.
Yep. All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes? Thank you. Uh, Agenda Item Number Four, Citizens Forum. Any citizens have anything they want to discuss that's not on the agenda? Kevin?
I just want to give credit where credit's due. This past weekend with the temperatures that we had, I just want to thank the Sewer Department, Water Department, Police Department, Fire Department, School Department, and the DPW, for everything they did. I worked out in that, and that's some cold weather to work in. I mean, I think it was 60, 62-year record. So I just want to say thanks to all those departments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Nothing? All right. Agenda Item Number Five, Review Discuss the Town Manager's Appointment of Richard Soto as Seasonal DPW Winter Plow Driver Effective Immediately Through April 30th, 2023. Pending the successful completion of pre-employment screening, state ethics, entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council. All right. Uh, the Town Manager's not here, and HR is not here, correct? So is anyone going to speak on behalf of this apply?
I've read his resume. He's a local guy, just looking to do some extra work during the wintertime if we get anything.
The gentleman here or not?
No.
Okay. He's not here either. Any of the members want to say anything?
No.
All right. Well, all those in favor of moving this up to Town Council? All right, thank you. Agenda Item Number Six, Review Discuss the Revised Job Description for DPW Director, Deputy Director. Entertainer Motion Recommended Town Council for Approval.
So move. Second.
Okay, again, Town Manager is not here?
He just texted me, said he's on the way.
All right.
Maybe you should wait for him.
You want to wait on Agenda Item Six through 11?
Yeah.
Till he gets here?
I want the Town Manager to hear.
All right. Okay, Greg, uh, Greg Warner just showed up, so that's good. So you can talk. So we're gonna skip, for now, we're gonna go to Agenda Item Number 12 until the Town Manager comes here. All right?
Thank you.
He's, he's coming in?
Yeah.
All right, well, wait a second. Go. We're on Agenda Item Number Six, and we're waiting for you. You're late.
Want to sit next to me?
You don't look happy either.
Got a lot going on today.
All right. So we're on Agenda Item Number Six, Review Discuss the Revised Job Description for DPW's Deputy Director. Entertainer Motion to Recommend to Town Council for Approval. Loz, uh, Steve made out of, uh, the motion. Councilor Dow seconded it. So it's on you, Mr. Town Manager.
Well, I think you really, um, need, this is Town Manager, the Charge Director, who wanted to explain maybe the job description.
Okay. And just for the record, Councilor, Steve is at the meeting.
So what's your question?
So we are on Agenda Item Number Six, so you have the floor.
So what we did for that position is remove, uh, you know, Matt used to be the Deputy Director, so there was an engineering component. We removed all the engineering language. I believe I gave you both, um, job descriptions, um, Councilor Marcati, so you can come through now.
Yep.
Um, and we added more of the deputy DPW responsibilities to that job description.
All right. Any of the members have any questions?
Okay.
Mr. Spring.
What's the reasoning why we're removing the engineering wording in that description?
No, go ahead.
Because we decided that we were gonna hire engineering services, so we were no longer gonna hire a, uh, a town engineer for, for any of our positions.
Who made that decision?
Yes.
Hold on, one at a time, please. I'm gonna let these people ask questions, and then I will go to the, anyone out there. Councilor Stees?
Yeah.
Or you also?
Yeah.
All right, Councilor.
I'm gonna agree with whoever's just gonna say that, because we had, we haven't decided on that yet. We threw it out there to, to consider it, uh, but we haven't voted to do that yet.
Wow.
Um, and to be honest with you, I think it's, that all of these items, numbers, six through 11 are very much premature. We just hired a DPW Director. We need to give him a chance to see the way, the lay of the ground right now in the DPW, see, get to know the people in there. This has nothing to do at all with the people in those particular posts right now. There's nothing to do with Glenn, and there's nothing to do with Phil. It has to do with the fact that we just hired this guy. We need to give him a chance to see, to see what he, how it works, how, how he wants to, to rearrange things so that it works the way he needs it to work, so the best way to make it work for the community as a whole.
Okay, now, we're talking about the Deputy DPW Director.
I'm aware of that. Position. I understand that.
What are you talking about?
And I wanted to point out that I would like to move to pass over Item Six through 11 inclusive.
All right, hold on. You making that as a motion?
Yes.
Does somebody want to second that?
Until, until we get some information from the DPW.
I want to point out to you that if we do that, we can no longer discuss any of them. We will just pass right over. All we'll be discussing is your mo- motion to, I guess, postpone, because that's what you're basically doing. There'll be no discussing these items at all.
I understand that. I think it's premature for all of them.
Exactly.
He's on his way.
We need, we need to give the DPW Director time to.
Figure it out.
Get out of here. He's gonna start again.
Thank you.
All right, but.
That's way premature.
I'm gonna let other people talk first, Gus, and then we'll come back to your motion, all right? Is it okay with the committee? Should we discuss this?
There's a motion on the floor.
No one seconded it.
Yeah.
Somebody want to second it?
Kevin.
I'll second.
All right. There's no more discussion then, uh, on the agendas. We are gonna discuss, though, the merits of postponing it. You've already had your say.
Yeah.
Councilor Dow, do you have something to say about postponing only? We're not talking about the agendas at all, just.
Why we're here then? You know about this. Why? Why we wasting everybody's time? Why we wasting my time? Why, why, why we're here? If you want to cancel.
We're doing our jobs.
This is what's posted three, four days ago. Why didn't you?
Let him speak.
Sounds like this was talked about before tonight's meeting.
Let him speak.
You know, it should be counseled. It should be canceled completely, not bringing everybody here and bringing me here and you and him and him. This is not fair.
Why are we supposed to have an input?
Right now, the floor is mine, please. The floor is mine.
Why, why are we supposed to have an input?
The floor is mine, please, please. I'm saying is, there should be agenda and move thing forward, and then later on, you can vote up there, yes or no. Let me finish, because the way the town is going, we're not going nowhere. You, everybody have e-bricks installed. Everybody want to do what he feel like it. Everybody do what, favor what he think this person favor him. Nobody's looking for the town what he want. I'm not, I'm not mentioning, I'm not put you specifically.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm speaking in a general, in a general. It's not right. We here, it's not right. It's not right.
Just a chat.
But we're not going nowhere. We keep fighting for who's the DPW, who's this, who's position. We're not gonna do this because this person, because of that, I, I, it's kind, it's kind of like a child, like a, like a playing games in here. Thank you.
I'll take, I'll take my second back, so we can discuss all this thing. I'll take it back. Let's discuss it.
All right, is that the proper way to do it?
This makes no sense.
I'm not a jo- I'm not.
This makes no sense. You already seconded it. You can't, you can't take it back.
Yeah, you can.
You withdraw second.
Yeah, you can. You can take it back.
Let's talk about it.
Stand up, Kevin. Kevin, stand up for Graham. This is a special.
I am standing up, Jimmy. Let's discuss it. Let's discuss the problem.
What are we gonna have? The guy afraid of this?
The process and the procedure is not done properly.
I'm not gonna have argues back and forth, all right? He's, he's taking it back.
Let this guy come and figure it out.
If they want to still postpone it after we'll discuss it, then they can do that.
But we discussing.
We're gonna discuss the merits of this position.
The protocol's wrong. That, that's, we don't need to drag anybody, we don't need to talk about anything, we don't need, we, the protocol's wrong. We, we don't have to, that's it.
Okay. You thought you were sorry.
We should look at the structuring of the DPW. We should make comparisons of other towns, not just start throwing things around. I understand you're frustrated. The problem is, we put up with incompetence for too long. We put it, we put up with incompetence from the most pathetic DPW Director in the state.
All right, you're not a board.
No, that's. I'm not frustrated, I'm more frustrated than anyone, but we can't make drastic moves now.
We're just talking about, do we want to create this position or not?
We should look at the positions in general. How about we do comparisons?
Is it gonna get posted?
Several years ago.
No, we're gonna ask that question if you're, if you give us a chance here, we'll ask that question.
How about before we start, how about before we start that we make comparisons, like the town of Webster, same population, same number of roads, has no director, one superintendent, one foreman, functions fine?
Okay.
We need all this overhead? We need, we need two crew chiefs, two foremen, an operations guy, a director and assistant director? We can't, you know, we need a roadmap to find out where we're in to start with?
Okay, now, Mr. Piyapi, you are discussing the issue here. So that's why we didn't postpone it, so you can discuss.
We don't have to get into specific people.
If you want to talk about issues like that, then we can't postpone it.
Well, that's what we should be considering.
If they want to postpone it afterwards, I'll allow it, okay? I'm gonna let someone else talk now. Kevin, go ahead, you want to talk?
I already said, I said I withdraw, so we can discuss.
All right, I'm gonna discuss it then.
The question is, is how are we gonna discuss it? Because it's multiple agenda items.
We're gonna take them one at a time.
That we have to individually vote on.
That's right.
So we can only discuss right now.
We're gonna discuss number six, yep.
What happened with the, uh, Town Managers saying that?
All right, hold on, I'm gonna let these guys talk. If you want to talk, please raise your hand, and I will call on you, okay? But I'm gonna let them talk first, they had their hand up first.
So what I'm gonna say is, and I'm just gonna lay it on the line, and, and I'm gonna say that it is, I don't have a problem with the people.
Exactly.
At all on this. The, my major problem is the process and the procedure that was done with this. Any single time we have a job position open in this town, it gets posted. I don't care if you're the Town Manager, or you're this kid coming here to plow part-time for the Highway Department, it gets posted. None of these jobs were posted. I have a problem with that. That's my major problem, eh, eh, how this process was done.
Sir, you, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I will let you answer, I'll let you answer. Are you done? For now? Okay, I'll let you answer. Go ahead.
What evidence do you have of that? Because historically, before Mr. Kamasi came up, you guys never cared about DPW positions, and I have emails to that effect from other councilors. And there had been people promoted while I've been here that had just been promoted up without posting, so nobody ever complained. The only time there's ever a complaint about any position in this town is from this Subcommittee, because it's DPW related, and all sorts of people start talking behind the scenes. I get a notification at the 11th hour that somebody has a hair across something, and then here we are, fighting it all out. I'll, I'll tell you straight up what the problem is right here, is that we have some open positions, the council's been on me to fill these positions, I finally got a DPW Director. We talked about some of the open positions, he's been meeting with us.
I see.
He's been meeting with the interim DPW Director. We talked about what we should do with some of this. Recently, this committee didn't want me to fill the engineering slot, and asked me to get on-call engineering services. They didn't like the permit and the KDA, asked me to get four. So we've been using on-call engineering services. We've also been told, well, we've been looking, that if we go out for a DPW Deputy who's also an engineer, we probably won't attract a candidate, given the price range we're offering. That is why we primarily lost Mr., um, Matt.
DeJardine.
DeJardine, because the competitive market right now to get an.
That's not why we lost DeJardine.
It's part of it, Jimmy.
Put a word on, Mr. Chairman.
One at a time.
Stop the people from yelling.
Let him talk, please.
I talked with Mr. Piyapi.
I will call on everyone.
And I value his input, and he knows that's not the only thing, but I'm talking about trying to hire a new engineer, Mr. Piyapi. We may not be successful. So, we looked at whether.
You're talking about things.
It's okay.
I don't have anything to do with this.
Right, right. So we're still going over this, in the, the grand scheme of things. We also know we're losing people left and right to competitive officers, offers from other towns. So concurrent with this particular issue, we know we may lose some people, and so in an effort, I'm talking to, uh, the people in management at DPW, and the incoming, the interim and the incoming, we propose these changes to try and retain some of the people we have. That's really what this is all about. You know, if you want to delay, you may lose some people, if you want to, you know, it's entirely up to you. But I'm trying to follow what I've been given from direction from this council and others, is to try and promote within, to retain people, and to ensure that we're functioning. Now, there can be criticism for another day on how we have to review it. What you have here is an effort to make these positions work with what we see going on in the market, and to keep people that we think are valuable to our organization, um, and, and that's what's been presented. In large part, it's been handled by, um, my HR Assistant Town Manager, but there's been input, as I said, from, from DPW, the existing management, the incoming DPW Director. I think finance has been involved, so there's been a hundred people talking about this. And again, it is my understanding, in past practice, not only here and elsewhere, that if it's an internal promotion, if you're just promoting somebody, they don't always post those. You don't necessarily need to do that. And I'm, I'm trying to answer all questions before we go through all, you know, six of these particular items, just where in general all of these changes are coming from, and some of them are being time-driven. And I know there was a comment in the back, we did previously say, you know, we wouldn't do anything till we got a new Director, but we did appoint one, and so he was consulted in during this process.
Okay.
And that's pretty much all I can say for now.
Uh, I'm gonna go with, uh, Co- uh, Mr. Lozo first, and then I will go back there.
I'm gonna put my arm down, because it's bad.
I know that you put your hand up, and I see him too, and I see a couple others. Go ahead.
We're here to send this to the full council. Either council is negatable here or posable, it's gotta go to the council. I don't believe in postponing it. As, um, as far as the Town Manager said, and I agree with how he presented this, that I don't have a problem sending this to the council. I don't have a problem with anybody that's here. And I noticed that there's quite a few DPW people here, and I know they're concerned, and I, I can see where they're coming from. But I think that beating it up down here and yelling at people down here is not gonna solve anything. So if we were to send this to Town Council, that's where it gets vetted, and yes or no is done up there. So this is a moot point to fight down here, with everybody yelling and screaming at each other, which is not right. I would say not to postpone it. Send these items to the council, let them decide on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna go to you next. You had your hand up.
I'll, I'll.
All right, then I'll go to you. Your name, please?
Michael Malone, Town Employee.
All right.
The reason stuff didn't go to council before is because there was a competent person in charge. When the incompetent person got in and made some of the hires she did, that's when it started going awry, because they didn't want incompetent people running the town, which she was. Furthermore, you told me yourself, no promotions until the new Director is in, and I understand you appointed a new Director. Is he here? Has he started yet?
He has not, but he's been coming into the building and talking to the staff.
Oh, yeah, I talked to him also. But? How much time has he had to evaluate what's going on to make a decision on that? All I say is, look at resumes. That's it. You, you, you want people that are qualified to run this town. All you have to do is look. It's not that difficult. And realistically, I've heard you say you want to promote from within, but there hasn't been much going on down there. We've had a guy asking for a year, because he does all the same work as a mechanic, to get a mechanic's position. And it's been fluffed off.
That's the first I've heard. You and I have talked about your situation.
My situation, yes.
I don't know that I, John, I'm not, well, maybe if I knew it by the names. John and I, I usually talk to these guys as of recent, since we've settled, leave, and talk about things, but maybe I'm missing the mechanical. But that is, I think, for a different day, that particular.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, there, there's been promotions talked about, and in the town meetings, you say, no promotions, no promotions, no promotions. Now it seems like this is getting whisked through without much thought behind it.
Hold on.
And realistically, if you look at, no offense, no offense to you, you look at his work history, he is not qualified to be in these positions. There's no qualifications.
Hold on, hold on, let him finish. Try to keep the personalities on.
That's exactly what's happening. This is not the point of.
Hold on.
No pool of my qualifications.
That's not my best. Not for that.
But, uh, this is gonna go.
It's going bad, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it now.
Just look at qualifications. I have a, I have a.
Go ahead, Mr. Piyapi.
Steve, you know, I know you're not gonna send it to council, but, I mean, the council's supposed to represent the people. This is how you hear from the people, number one. You guys seem to have this all fixed already, which is why everybody's here and nobody's happy with it. And if you ask me if we have a competent Director come, Gus is absolutely right, the guy would get here and evaluate people, not go on hearsay, and maybe everybody that, that needs, wants to be appointed should be, but let the guy work with them and make a, a, a educated decision. Jimmy.
Hold on. Are you done, Mr. Piyapi? Are you all set?
I guess.
Okay.
Jimmy, I can see where you're, I can see where you're coming from, but my thing is, um, this is all here. Either way, either it passes here or it doesn't pass here, it still goes to the council, okay? So that's where it's decided. Yelling at people down here and, and screaming is not helping matters. I mean, this was put in front of us, and I, I, I read everything. Like I said, I don't have any problem with any of the candidates, but if, we, we, we have to, no matter what we do, we have to send it to council, and that's the, the way this body works.
All right, Steve, I just want to say, you know, we're not graduates of the Harvard Debate Club.
Right.
There's gonna be some hollering.
I, I know that, I know that, but. I know, I know a lot of tension in the room. There's a lot of tension in the room. Okay, I'm, I'm done.
I have other people that are ahead of you, okay?
Yep, I'm done.
Do you still want to talk, sir?
Yeah, I want to know why this was not proposed, for anybody to go for it. Why was it a backdoor?
Promotion.
Bruton's taking a walk.
It's a promotion. It's, it's, it's a promotion. It does not need to be posted. When we, when we've hired other people in, in Town Hall, it's always been practiced, when somebody gets promoted in the department, and I have many people that I can, and I'm not gonna do that, because that's not my place, it's Personnel Matters, however, they have the job, their jobs were not posted, and they got a promotion. They've identified their hard work, and they feel that they can take on more. And that's up to, 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 to the Director and to the professionals that evaluate these folks to determine whether they should be promoted or not.
So who's evaluating these folks here?
They weren't, no one brought them to the table to say that they, they deserved a promotion.
They're at the table, their names are on those papers.
Exactly.
No, we're, we're talking about these two gentlemen right here.
Exactly, who evaluated?
Who evaluated them?
The Town Manager, you alluded to that earlier. He told you who evaluated them. It was a team of people.
How could somebody evaluate?
That's enough now, don't keep going on.
Not rehashing.
All right, all right. I'm gonna go with Councilor Dow, unless you're, you have more? Councilor Dow.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have a job here not to let people argue together, because it's gonna get a aha. So you, you need to stop and let everyone, uh, uh, speak supper. There can't be back and forth. It's gonna become a lose, out of hand, and we're gonna have a problem.
I agree, I'm trying, I'm trying my best.
Number two, we're talking about, we're talking about Agenda Six, why we take the engineer in out of the position. Because every time we want to do a job, we paying $10,000 private engineer to do a plan and review. I don't know what the engineer at the DPW job, he have no job to do. That's why we moved that, uh, position. Let me finish. Let, that's why we moved that position. We save money for the town, and we do thing right. When you pay engineer from out-town, why you want to pay another engineer in town? Is no need for it. Number one. Number two. Number two. The reason why we move thing around, to make thing better. If, if somebody get offended personally, he always has another chance. It's not, the life is not end here. Somebody will leave tomorrow, some other one will apply. It's simple, like, we can't be arguing for, just because, eh, eh, he, like I say, we talk outside, correct? I'm gonna speak. Like I say, he was gonna go for the DPW, the opposition, and we all support him. He, he say, no, I don't want to take the job, I'm not ready for it. So actually, he was good man not taking it, because he could become the head of the department. So I think, guys, I know all of you are mad, and I know some of you qualify, but wait for the next step. Maybe it's better for you. That's the only thing I'm gonna say. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go with Councilor, Steve's next, before I go to Cory.
Well, one of the things I want to point out, was actually sparked by Steve over there, which is the idea that, one of the reasons I think we need to.
Could you speak up, please?
One of the reasons I think we need to kind of sit on this right now, besides the DP, the fact that DPW Director is not here, um, is the fact that, um, I don't want to see this turn into a firestorm upstairs. Um, and in front of the cameras, and create this giant brouhaha over individuals, which is already turning into.
Well, we are.
We're already on camera.
Which is true. But I think you understand my point. And, one of the concerns that I have is that we'll, we'll start this discussion here, we'll have it go on for the next hour and a half, um, and then just rehash it again upstairs.
All right.
And I really think, as I, to repeat, I know I'm gonna repeat myself, but I really want to see Mr. Benoit in here to take a look at these things, and I understand that the manager said, that he's had a chance, that he did talk about this personally with him and, and Adriana and other people involved, and I understand that. But I think it, I think it will, it could very easily be a situation for him where, once you actually get into the position and actually are working things and trying, and, and seeing actually how the pieces fit into place, rather than doing it before coming in, um, it might change things, it might not.
Okay.
Okay? And it very, it very well may be that, say, in June, he decides that Phil and Glenn are indeed the ideal people for those positions.
All right.
And that's, and if that's, if that's so, that's great.
Okay.
Um, I have no problem with either of them.
All right.
Um, or any, you know, the other issues that we'll probably see coming down the pike as a new Director comes in and wants to, to, you know, make the changes that, that may be necessary. He did make a point of saying that he wanted to do a lot of that kind of basic homework to get started, and we haven't even let, even, haven't really even let him have a chance to do that.
All right. Uh, before I go to you, Mr. Piyapi, Cory has had his hand up. Cory, unfortunately, you don't live in town, so we'll have to take a vote to let you speak. I have no problem letting you speak, but we're gonna take a motion. Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, we have never made that motion at a such a point in the past, so there's no reason to do it now. I have no reason. I have no problem letting him talk.
I'm just gonna ask that. Yeah, there are no questions?
I make a motion. I'll, I'll check it.
Oh, isn't there a letting him speak? Okay. I'm just trying to do it right, Cory. Go ahead.
So, uh, through you two, either, each our department or the Town Manager, um, and this is in regards to a comment made by the Town Manager. Um, there was already a position that was, uh, made, and that position, uh, ended up going through a different committee to be revised, and it went up to the Town Hall, or, excuse me, the Town Meeting to be approved, uh, that position, then went back down to DPW Subcommittee for revision of what that, um, uh, job description entailed.
Right.
And then it went back up to be voted on. Uh, through, uh, Mr. McCall's mouth was, uh, the question was asked whether that position was gonna be, um, re-put out there for people to, uh, apply for.
Right.
And the answer was yes, in clear vision, due to equal opportunity. So I'm wondering why this isn't gonna happen with this position after it's revised, so there's equal opportunity for other people, which both you and HR stated wasn't the right reason to do so. So why is the difference in this portion when you're revising a job description that you were taking away qualifications from, and you're not allowing equal opportunities for this position versus what you did for the other position?
So, again, it's a promotion. The other position was a brand-new position that was posted, because it was a brand-new position that we were hiring outside for. We, no one.
Hold on, let her, let her finish.
You asked a question, I'm, I'm answering you.
Yep.
We decided to promote them, because they burned it, they worked hard. As a matter of fact, not but two weeks ago, he was the number-one candidate for the DPW Director position. So we decided to give merit, credit and merit words due, so we're promoting him.
Okay.
That's the only thing that's happening here. When you promote someone, you do not have to post the position.
But you're making a change to the position to make a promotion happen, is what you're doing, which is not okay. You cannot take it.
So we're making a change to a position and running it by Subcommittee.
Len, now, now. Len, now let him finish, please.
You're changing a position to provide a promotion to an employee. You're, you're now changing that to fit that specific employee. That's not promotion okay in the world of employment, just like the new... If, if you were to promote him into the position that is currently in place, this conversation wouldn't be happening. But the problem is, you're taking away, you're taking out qualifications that the possible promotionee doesn't have and to be able to promote him into that position. And the question is, you're changing the job description like you changed the job description prior. So why is it going without free equal opportunity?
So, the answer to that is that, first of all, we don't need an engineer that was hashed out with Subcommittee. As the Town Manager alluded to, we decided we're gonna go with Engineering Services. I didn't decide that, the council decided that, the Subcommittee decided that. So, we made the position to take out the Engineering Services because the organization does not have a need for that right now. As the employer and the organization, we can change a job description, bring it up to Subcommittee for approval. It's up to them whether they wanna approve it or not. And they make the decision, and then it goes up to council. Nothing illegal has happened here, because it has to go through a boat, and it has to be approved by council.
All right, this has been answered.
So, I've answered.
She's asked and she's answered.
I do have a response. This, I'm not claiming anything was done illegally.
Oh, okay.
By any means, I'm not saying anything was done illegally. But what you are saying is that the Subcommittee voted that this should happen. And I've been at every Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee has not voted that this change should happen, it was not recommended through the Subcommittee.
So they're two separate agenda items. To answer your question, they're two...
That's enough on this one. All right, no, we're done with this one. Thank you. I'm gonna let Steve's talk first, all right? Go ahead, Counselor.
Actually, I wanted to say something about what Adriana just said. Um, and that's, first off, that, um, the way the, what the council voted for regarding engineering was to... Was, what the council voted for regarding engineering was to put, was to put these temporary contractors in place until we could determine whether or not we wanted to do contracting permanently or hire inside. We haven't decided, we haven't decided either way yet.
Thank you.
I mean, that's the issue. We may decide that doing contracting is best. We haven't seen the balance yet. You know? We haven't yet seen determined what the, what the cost benefits would be between having it internally versus having it contracted. Um, there may be benefits to both, there probably are benefits to both. But exactly how they lay out, I don't know yet. We're going right into the budget cycle at this point, so now is the time to have that discussion. Um, but, but the issue, I think, is that, at the moment, we have nothing in front of us that compares and contrasts those two alternatives. All we do at the moment is have those four, those four engineering contractors in place to fill the gap because we do not have a town engineer right now. That is why they are there.
All right, Counselor. Before I open it up any further, he does still have a motion on the floor to postpone. Do you want to second it again? Otherwise, we're gonna keep going on here.
Right now, I wanna hear what people have to say about it. This, this is a big thing.
I wanna say something first, okay? I have to agree with Counselor Steve's. I think the new DPW director should be involved in this. That's all I'm gonna, besides that. Before I go to Counselor Lazo, these two guys have had their hands up. I'm gonna let them speak first, Mr. Pioppi.
Okay, I do think you're saying, I think you have a misconception about the engineering. The, 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 somebody up there has to have an engineering, they don't have to have a stamp, but they have to have some sort of engineering background or education. Because, we're not looking for someone for design, but we need someone that's capable of understanding a unit price job, verifying quantities, and, and, and all the stuff that goes along with payment approval. And that's, that's, you don't learn that in five minutes. And, and the other, the other point I'd like to make is, I think it's a pretty sad commentary on the new director's managerial ability if he's not interested in seeing what, coming here for us, seeing, like Gus said, seeing what people can do, evaluating, and then making a decision.
He certainly wanted to do that.
Mr., I forget your name, I'm sorry.
Mike.
Mike, go ahead.
The last time a job description was changed, we ended up with a director that set this town back probably 20 years with what she didn't do. My question is, my question is, can we ask who sat in on the interviews for the director's position?
Oh, that's, doesn't really pertain to this issue, do you?
It kinda does, if that guy is in the room going for a promotion.
Okay, if you wanna answer that, I'll let you answer it.
That could be a conflict.
That's not answering that.
Okay.
Not answering that.
Okay, and, just one more. Uh, who did you say was in on coming up with this job description?
What do you mean, who's in on?
Who, who discussed, who's in the discussion on?
The, the job description was reviewed by several people, I don't have to disclose anything.
You, you did say DPW management earlier.
I do not have to disclose anything.
I get that, but you did say DPW management earlier.
I'm passing a further hash, so.
I'm gonna go with Counselor Lazo next, then I will come to you, Gus.
Just a quick, quick thing on the process, Gus. You know, postpone it here, don't bring it to the council. Subcommittee is where you knock the ten. Have your disagreements, do what you gotta do, make the call, you recommend, that's all you ask, recommendation. You're not making a decision here, Travis. You can recommend to postpone. You'll go to council, and the recommendation is to postpone. And then we'll decide whether we wanna postpone. Okay? Um, that's on the process.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there, though, okay? And I'll tell you why. On May 31st, you postponed the appointment of Andrew Pelletier, and it did not go up to the Town Council until June 27th. And Town Council, you postponed it to your next Subcommittee meeting of June 8th. And then it went to the Town Council on June 27th. So you have also postponed.
The recommendation was to postpone. Whether the chairman puts it on the agenda or not, not my business. You're a Subcommittee Chairman, you work for the chairman. You don't work for yourself. So when I recommend something out of PPP, it goes upstairs. Whether it goes on the agenda or not, I don't control that, that's controlled by the chairman. So moving forward, I would rather see you not...
Practice, that's all I'm saying. Go ahead.
Past practice is, if the chairman doesn't want this to go on, it won't go on. But I mean, I think the Vice Chairman, the Chairman will sit out, and usually, I would say that it's gonna go to council.
All right.
But what I'm trying to say is, now's the night you hammer it out. Throw everything on the floor. We wanna hear from people at Subcommittee. We wanna hear their frustrations. I came in tonight, okay? I'm a big fan of DPW, rank it five, boots on the ground. And I am a big fan of Phil's, and Glenn, and all the guys. And I, sometimes I shouldn't talk to some of the guys, but I do, because I'm a Southridge guy, the Southridge guys. When you look, look at what happened, I walked into a meeting, I had a good conversation with, um, Mr. Pioppi prior to coming here. Lot of good points, he talking about one of the best Lord guys around, had some suggestions and everything. And I wanted to come here, open-minded, and say, okay, let me, let's, let's roll it out on the floor, let's hammer the ten. I come through the door, and I got guys yelling at me. You know the one thing I don't like? Is people yelling at me. Especially, when they need my vote, you're turning me the other way. But it's a good thing I like to do the right thing because it is the right thing for the benefit of Southridge. You know, when somebody says, hey, we'll do our best, and all of a sudden they say, well, you already failed. That's a jack. Okay? And I don't think that's prosperous for Southridge sitting there, oh, you failed. Failed what, haven't you done it yet? I haven't done a thing yet. Outside, I came here, open-minded, and I wanna hear the pros and cons. Nobody has to tell me about, about Phil, okay? I spent six months of getting nothing done, then all of a sudden this guy Phil, I don't know from the hole in the wall, becomes the actor after the engineer left, Heather left. Everybody said the barn's on fire, we'll never survive. And this gentleman just happened to walk into the Subcommittee, still, I didn't know him. And then all of a sudden, within three months, we got more done in three months, down all, this, that, I mean, the list goes on. So right away, this guy is got my eye in my ear.
Okay, but we're talking about the DPW Deputy Director position.
No kidding, who's going for the position? Wake up and smell the garbage.
He's on the agenda, he's on the agenda.
And this is what I'm talking about. The guy came in, and in three months, every problem was done within 10 days. Never lied to us, never be, be us thus. He, he said, if I can do it, I can do it, or I can't do it. What more do you want in a straight shooter, right? All of a sudden, this guy's stock starts going up. I know he doesn't sweep the streets, pave the roads, and plow the streets. The foot soldiers do that, I know who they are. But you gotta give that guy credit for what he's done in a short period of time. Do I think he can hire a deputy's job? I wanted to give him the top job. I voted against the top guy. Whether he's qualified enough for that job, he's already proved himself to me. Somebody says, let's read resume, you can take the paperwork, and it's paper. You take a performance, and you got a job getting done. Now, looking at the next guy, Glenn. One of our number-one snow guys. You wanna lose him to another town? Where to, where to fight to keep him? You wanna let him go? Let him go! Go ahead, just say you wanna do it, and he'll go to the next town over. And if you don't wanna do it, then you vote for it, you go upstairs. This is where the argument's gonna come in. The thing that I liked about the Pioppi debate, Pioppi debate was a debate of Ohio. It was about cost-effectiveness, put a square foot on doing roads, different challenges on how to handle it. That was creative. I'd like to take him, sit him down at DPW meeting, on open forum, talk about roads, to enlighten everybody at the table on how some of the towns are doing it. And they're doing it prosperously, and saving a lot of money. Going forward, as I'm concerned, I'm here to learn, I wanna hear from them. I don't wanna yell at me, and I wanna hear from them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. All I wanna say is that, I hope that the same consideration is given to my Subcommittee if we postpone it as was given to your Subcommittee. So, who else has their hand up? George, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanna let you know, I, I think highly of Phil, and this is my comments, and nothing against Phil nor Glenn.
I agree.
I pushed Phil to put in for the Town Manager, the Town Accountant's job. Accountant, I'm sorry. I take exception to what the manager said tonight when he said that. Positions within the DPW didn't happen until you, this committee started doing it. And by charter, you're responsible for the, for the thing, for appointments. Sometimes I don't think the manager doesn't look at the charter fully, because when they post it...
I'm gonna take a point of order, the charter, I do know what the charter says. And when I got here, they weren't bringing it through DPW Subcommittee, Mr. Chenere. And I did check, and the history was past practice. No, you're attacking me personally, and I don't like it.
He's got a good point, so just stay off the person.
You're right, but that's why he posted the DPW's at his position.
I ruled that he's out of order.
Right. So, during the DPW's Director's Position, it was even advertised wrong, and it had to be re-advertised. Because in the charter, it said three years, and then the posting was indefinite. So, positions within the DPW go to your, your group here. Now, as promotions go, when you guys did the, uh, the, uh, position that you hired a company there, they, that was a temporary, temporary thing. To see where you wanted to go, whether people were gonna get hired. If you look back at the minutes, you'll see that those discussions were said. If we can get somebody, this is gonna be a temporary thing. This here, they're changing a job description and making that position, they're changing it with the assumption they're gonna leave Engineering Services there. And then they say, well, maybe we're gonna change it later on. So that means that position becomes vacant later on, you're gonna change it again. So, to give these guys a fair shot at things, it should be posted. It's a new position. It's a new position being brought to the DPW, and very well-qualified person, and Glenn too. And, you know, they say it's a promotion. It's a promotion. It's a promotion that's been written for an individual. You know, contrary to what they say, I, I don't care what they say. You know, they have a job change that is your responsibility to either accept it, send it forward, and listen to the concerns of everybody involved. Workers, HR, Town Managers, it's your responsibility, this is where it belongs, and you guys make the decision. To arbitrarily just come, here it is, it's been already written before you even come here. And I just, I just think that it should be given a fair shot.
All right, I think that this, I'm gonna let you talk, but I think that this has gone on quite a while now, 40 minutes. I'm gonna let you have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. What we did here to keep the local guy. If we give the position the way it is, none of you qualify, none of you that can step up in the future. We will always bring somebody from out of town to apply. You have a stamp on engineering? So what we did, we changed that position because we care about the town, we care about the residents, we're gonna keep the local people here. We don't want nobody to leave. Maybe today is not your turn, but tomorrow you have another chance. It's not temporary position change to fit somebody, in the next two years, we're gonna change it again, just to be clear. Thank you.
Okay, now, now that we're done with this conversation, so we're gonna take a vote. Do you want to postpone it, or send it up?
Mr. Chair, I'd still like to hear what people have to say. This is a big thing. I don't care if it takes till 10 o'clock at night, Town Council managers go to 11 o'clock.
Okay, but Mr. Pioppi has spoken three times, and so, and he has spoken...
Council wants to speak, she wants to speak, I'd like to hear. This is a big decision to make.
All right, okay, your point's well taken.
I have nothing against the gentleman applying for it, but obviously, I've never seen this many people in a meeting.
All right, your point is well taken. I'll go with you first.
Counselor Dow just said that he wants local people. One of the promotions is guys from Oxford.
He's already here for 18 years.
18 years?
How many years?
18 years.
14 years.
I mean, the Sewer Department's private, I'm local.
Yeah, but he's more local.
Easy now, easy, take it easy.
14.
Not in DPW.
No, but I've been in the town, working for the town for 14... Yeah, I know the Sewer Department's private, but...
Okay. Are you all set, sir? Mr. Pioppi, once again, then I'll go to you. I will come to you.
Obviously, you guys should take this serious, because have, where have you ever seen some of these guys show up?
That's the problem, because they don't come before. They should come all the time. You know what their problem?
Counselor Dow, he's got the phone.
He can fix it last minute. Thank you, sorry, Mr. Chair.
So, first of all, I don't think you understand, like, what, on the business level of the DPW, what needs to take place in the office.
We're talking to businessmen.
Okay, you don't understand unit price jobs?
Go ahead.
Do you understand unit price jobs?
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a construction guy too, I worked in a union for 16 years.
Oh, yeah, okay, you administer unit price jobs?
Go ahead, speak, I'm not gonna argue with you, go ahead. The floor is yours.
I doubt you do, because if you did, you would understand that there's more to that than you can learn in five minutes. I mean, Phil might have a lot of potential, he's a good guy, but we're promoting the paper-delivery guy that didn't get it at once.
Let him speak.
That's insulting, Phil, that's enough.
Hold on, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's a pizza delivery guy.
I didn't hear it.
I didn't say pizza.
The paper, sorry, paper delivery.
That's the analogy.
Want the order, Chair?
That's it.
I'm speaking, and I'm not being...
Want the order, it's one version.
No personalities, no personalities, I am ruling you out of order. No personalities, please.
I didn't, that wasn't personalities, I, I don't dislike Phil at all, and he might have a lot of potential. He needs to get some more experience.
All right, we hear you. I'm gonna let you speak, Phil.
When the Operations Manager position went up for grabs, yeah, not a single one of the people that were here in this room went for that job. Not a single one of them went. They have not liked me since the day I stepped foot into the DPW anyways, so it doesn't matter to me how they feel about it. I try to get along with them, I try to respect them, for each individual person for what they do. I'm sorry they don't respect me in that way, that's fine. They don't know my background, they don't know where I came from, they know I came from the Sewer Department, that's all they know. That's all they know, they don't know what I did, or I attended that. They don't know how I grew up, they don't, they don't know anything, they don't know what I did in the military.
All right, Phil, I've read your resume, and I think you are qualified.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Montevi, Counselor Montevi, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Clearly, during the time when we didn't have a DPW director, both of these individuals showed that the DPW ran great and fine. Giving them promotions solidifies that they can continue to run their parts of the DPW the way that they want to do it. And I was very happy when they were running it alone. And now, if they can do what they're doing, and continue to do that with the increased job title, then the DPW director can focus on more things like roads, okay? The promotion, HR said, doesn't have to be posted. So if people want to disagree with that, then that's fine, but that's your answer from HR. And as far as your answer from the town manager, the town manager said that all these different people were consulted, including the guy who we just hired. So why postpone? Basically, you're, you're, you're calling him a liar. If, if what that says is not true, and you postpone, just vote it yes or no, and recommend it. Because you're basically calling out the new DPW director. Hey, come, come to council next Monday and call the manager a liar for what he said. Because I don't believe he's lying. I think that the new DPW director has already given his blessing on this thing. And he's probably looking at it like, "I already said this, why do I have to stare at it for three months?" And as far as these gentlemen go, they deserve something for what they've done. And they've proven to me that if the going gets tough, and we don't have a director, they get the job done, both Phil and Glenn. And I think that you should not postpone it. That's, that's the reason I'm discussing this, I think it should be voted yes or no, recommended or not, and let the council go through it. We don't need to waste any more time with the new DPW director, unless you think your town manager's lying too. Thank you very much.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
I just think you're putting a carcass full of horse, because the town council hasn't decided either way whether they're going to do engineering and keep the engineering in this job, or keep it on, on having contractors. So to me, to vote for this, like Mr. Shenier said, you vote for this now, and the council decides that they want to keep engineering in that job, what do you do with them then? You know what I'm saying? So you don't have a final decision from the town council yet. So even trying to move this job forward, you technically shouldn't be doing it. Because you don't have the decision from the town council yet on engineering.
All right.
It's up to them, you know what I'm saying? So if they decide that they want engineering to stay in that job, then you promoted the guy, what are you doing from there?
Okay, thank you. Very good point. Go ahead, sir.
John Trey, here, thirty years, you're a part of DPW. I've got nothing against Monoffield. I applied for this position twenty-five years ago. Just for the experience. Saw the job, it's a job, didn't want it. Did for experience. And we walked up to me in the garage after that position, asked me if I wanted his job. "Let's go, form it." "No, don't like it." "I like what I'm doing. I sweep the streets, and I fall underneath vehicles, and get dirty. That's what I do." "I'm not opposed to any promotions, but we have positions that the town manager temporarily filled, that were there for over two years. All of a sudden, we're going to be promoting people with positions on the floor that have not been filled. We've got people working out of classifications, and people stepping up. In the past six months, since Heather's left, we've had a great rapport. Union and, and the management, get together, how are we going to do this job? What are we going to do? Talk to Phil, talk to Glenn. Hey, check the weather, we're going to break the sweep rock next week." "Not asking, you're telling me, that's what we got to do." "Great idea, we're out, we're sweeping. How are you going to do this job? It's a group of people working together." "So why don't you fill the positions that are in there now, and why all of a sudden does this happen? It shouldn't happen. I've known Scotty forever, I've known Steve. I don't like politics, politics is awful. And for me to come here, something's wrong, okay? We're losing people, we're hemorrhaging people. What you see here, minus one person, is your senior operating people. The rest of, other than, we have three mechanics, two custodians, who can't count as on-the-floor workers. Other than that, you've got John, John, Mike, Mike, and Luke. That's it. The rest of the people are all seven months or less. We're trying to keep people, not walking out the door. This is walking people out the door."
All right, thank you. You're going to have a hard time having a general comment today, aren't you? All right, anybody else?
Council Adams.
No.
Hold on.
Council Adams.
All right, Peg Dean had her hand up earlier.
Well, earlier, now that point's relevant. I heard you all cursing from downstairs, and just wanted to ask if you all could please be civil. The only thing I ask is, let's keep it PG, we want to be able to broadcast these, and we want to know that if kids in the room, they're not going to hear the hot bombs and stuff. So that's my only plea. And then my other thing is, I'm always thinking about how the rest of the world views us, right? And if a potential employee or town manager is watching our, our, our meetings, there's nothing wrong with being hot-blooded and getting passionate, but just think about that delivery and what it portrays out to the world.
So be polite. It's all right to tell somebody to go to hell, just be polite. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Well said, you know, passion is, is what we, we thrive to do once in a while. My question to yourself, Mr. Chair, and SIS member, Spleen. You both, from my understanding, spoke to the new DPW director over the weekend. So, you didn't, one of you guys did. So, that being said, what did the DPW, the new DPW director say? You said, was he qualified, or was he not qualified? Or are we going to move forward with this, or not? What was his recommendation to you? And did he ask you at any point in time, um, if... Asked you, or whoever it was that spoke to him specifically asked... Did he ask you, "Tell me why he's not qualified"? So I would, whoever that was that spoke, speak up.
Well, first of all, Council Adams, you told me that you talk to your department heads all the time. So is there some reason we can't call him?
I didn't say you couldn't. I asked you, what was the answer?
I'm not going to talk about that, all right? Just not going to talk about it. What I, any conversation I have with him, to me, is between me and him. Thank you. Anybody else?
That's enough.
Anybody? Council Rivas?
Um, so I tend to agree with Council Ron and Sammy, and what he was saying. I mean, I do recall conversations in this subcommittee, in videos that I've been, that I've watched the recordings, about the engineering piece in that job description before any conversations were had about Phil applying to, to this position. So I have heard conversations about it, um, and sort of, maybe not an explicit vote, but directives where the town manager is taking, again, this is the DPW Subcommittee. You know, we do hear from Councilor Lazo, who is a professional in the field, and he is on the council. And we take those considerations and those suggestions seriously. Again, because I'm not an expert in construction. And what I've heard, I was a reporter, so I do remember what people say. Um, and so I do remember conversations about, we want construction experience, we want this type of experience. That is what the town manager responded to in this specific situation. As a council, we have instructed, we have asked, and, and repeatedly asked the town manager to fill positions, because the roads are extremely important to our residents, to our citizens, who go to work and drive on these roads every single day. And so I don't feel the need to postpone. I, I believe that at this point, he's followed the directives. Various people have talked to the new DPW director, and there has been HR, there has been, again, these are the professionals that we hire, right? That we approve, the town manager, to hire, to use their expertise in hiring the right people, right? Maybe in the past, that didn't happen the way. We learn, hopefully, we're learning from those mistakes, right? But in this case, I don't see the reason to postpone. And I do agree with Ms. Dean, that these are public meetings, and people watch these meetings, and that's part of our reputation. And so we want to be professional. There are a lot of emotions, and that's understandable. It is, but people, you're doing this work every single day. We understand that passion. But we do have to consider that we're being recorded, and that people are watching these recordings, so that is...
All right. I'm going to let Council Lazo go first.
Yeah, that's okay.
Um, I, I am here to, to grant you a new information that I don't know about. Mr. Polo has said something, everybody that spoke. The one thing that sticks out in my mind is the magic question. What happens if, in the future, we're meeting with the new manager of the interim, that we decide that we don't want to go with the engineering firm, that when we do a cost analysis, it says to go back to the engineering DPW? At that point there, I'd like to know what the plan is. If we go forward, um, with the plan that we have tonight, and you kick it up, and we vote for it, and everybody gets in place, and then all of a sudden, we go forward? Because listen, for the DPW guys, this is just the beginning. We have a lot of overhaul to do, and a lot of things to look at of how we do business. We've got a lot of things we do, and we're cost-effective. So going forward, Mr. Polo mentioned that, that piece. And that's the only piece I see right now that would be a, a stick in the spoke to, "Okay, what do we do? Create another engineering position? Or do we work backwards? How does that work? I mean, you know, I'm not a, you know, in my business, we make sure we do all that first."
Okay.
I do want to say from, just to piggyback on the fact from a recruitment perspective, you see people that are watching these, these interactions that we're having here, and they're seeing that employees that have dedicated ten, fourteen years of their lives are, are being bad-mouthed or by their peers, that every time there's a promotion that comes up internally, it's, it's like they're crucified. That's not good for us, because people won't want to come here and work. We're trying to promote internally professional, develop, develop people, and give people the merit that they deserve. That's what, that's called professional development. And that's what people look for. If we continue to do these, to do these things to our employees, we're going to continue to lose folks. I, I'm on the ground, I have people coming to my office all the time, I hear the talk, and I'm just looking for the benefit of the town, I'm, I'm, I want to keep your, your positions filled and staffed. And if every time we have someone that's talented, that's, that we, we feel can do the job, that's proven themselves, we do this to them, they're going to leave. And we're going to take ten steps back instead of moving forward.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Spleen?
Yes. First, to Council Adams, I did not call.
No, didn't. Appreciate it. Didn't come up alive. My apologies for me.
I just, I just want to know, it wasn't me. Next, I want to say, I have nothing against Phil, I have nothing against Glenn. Glenn and I are good friends. I am not one to knock somebody that wants the better themselves. I'll give you a pat on the back and knock yourself out. Go for it. With that being said, I concur to what Council Lazo was talking about, that was one of my questions tonight, through you, to either the town manager or the HR director. This goes upstairs, and both positions get approved. My question is, what happens? Phil is the operations manager now, Glenn goes to a new position of senior, what? Senior public works foreman. What happens to operations manager's position, and what happens to the position that Glenn currently has now? Are those two positions we still need to fill?
Just one of them.
Which one?
The operations director needs to be manager, needs to be filled, and then we're working on a facilities manager. We're working on an MS four, so there are other positions that are going to come up.
So the position that Glenn currently carries now, if he gets promoted, that position becomes obsolete.
Right. The day, you know, Glenn retires or leaves, if we get an oper, a senior foreman that has twenty years of experience, obviously, we can classify him as a senior foreman, but someone that's junior would start off as a foreman, so we, we have that option.
So my next question, if I may, as far as the deputy director's position, under Agenda Item Seven with the Schedule One, can somebody clarify what that class is going to be, and what step it's going to be? Because there's two different...
So for which position? I'm sorry, Mr. Spleen.
The deputy director's position. They have two different things that came from your office.
So I was saying, he's, he's at this grade and step, and he's moving to, so that's from two. So he's moving to A, A S Step One, which is for the deputy director.
An A one? That's the question, because according to our paperwork, it says A six. There's an email from you that says A one, Step Six, and there is no Step Six.
No, it's A one.
And that was from an email from you.
A six, Step One. A six, Step One, sorry.
Okay, I just want clarification, that's all. Thank you.
Council Steve?
I'm, I'm inclined to also agree with what Scott was saying, and, and some of what I agree with saying. I'd say, I think part of the issue is that we're really, there's really two different issues going on in the room right now. One is, um, the, is professionally treating our staff, and making sure that we do that, and promoting people that are qualified. Um, and the other is the issue of, of how we, as the town, want the department itself to be structured, and, and with this particular job of, we keep going back to the issue of whether or not we want it to have engineering around. And it really does make a huge difference whether we put, leave engineering in the job description, or we take it out. Whether or not, you know, Phil or anybody else in the room is part of, is that, would get that job. You know, because if, and, and it has nothing to do with the people that are in this room. The job description as a whole, as it is now, requires engineering. Um, and the town does need engineering. You know, I, I know I talked about this earlier. We have not made a formal decision yet whether or not we're going to outsource it or keep it in-house. We need to do that before we make this change. If we're go, if we want to keep it in-house, we can't change this. If we decide we want to go back to it being in-house, we can't change this. Um, if we, if we want to go out-of-house, then this is fine. But we haven't made that decision yet.
Okay. Point well taken. I'll let you answer, then I'm going to go to Council Lazo.
My point is, to the manager, I'd just like the manager to answer probably. What's the plan? And if there's not a plan, how, how do we approach this? I understand when we bid West Street. The job's engineer, okay? Our engineer doesn't engineer, West Street's reconstruction. But the thing is, when you talk to guys like Jimmy Pioppi, and even guys, unique guys that can run numbers and do the calculations and stuff, what's the plan? I mean, I understand what Council's saying, the simple question is, okay, I want to pass this today, we pass it. It goes up Monday, we go for it. Now, what, where do we go from here with the engineering piece?
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
I don't want to call Moose Blood, I don't know his first name. Ben Moose is going in. He's the one that asked the twenty-nine-ten question. Where do we go from here?
Just put a record.
Just put a record. What's his name? Moose. Moose.
All right, I'm going to let the town manager answer.
So I think there's a lot of things you have to look at. Many years ago, almost every town had an in-house attorney. But you realize that you don't have the depth and breadth of experiences within one single person that you might get with firms. Now, I've heard some things, I've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Pioppi, he's still here. There've been times when you've sang certain people's praises, and other times when you haven't. Because there was times you would tell me that our engineer didn't have enough street smarts, and had to have more road experience, and then later on, when we were working together, he, you know, he told me he saw more qualities that he liked in our, our engineer DPW deputy, but unfortunately, he left. I mean, to get a decent engineer that probably has a lot of the qualifications you both want, you're probably going to have to pay more than the market may be bearing right now. Now, we did have a lot of conversations I had with Mr. Pioppi, I had with Mr. Jackson, in some other communities, where we were talking about on-call services. A lot of communities about our size really rely on outside engineering for that reason, because they can't afford to get a decent person that can also be, drive a truck, have a CDL, and do different things, and have, be a professional engineer. One of the towns I worked for had a DPW director and an engineer, but they also had well over two-hundred road miles, they had two-and-a-half times the population, you did, different tax base. The way I've looked at some of the communities around here, they're using this model where they have a deputy director that is more road-oriented, they, they're learning the various amounts of the jobs, bidding the jobs, taking the management skills, and they often work their way up through. You could take that job description and say, you know, a civil engineering degree preferred, you could leave it open so that if there's changes, but, you know, we were pretty much committed to that other model, and that was frustrating to the council and others, because we were paying an engineer, he couldn't always do the stuff we needed, so we still had a higher outside engineering. Anyway, so, you know, there's, there's a perfect answer. And, you know, you wind up paying more money. So they, one of the issues that kept coming up, we didn't want to pay for this, we didn't want to pay for others, let's forget that particular option of having some of these on-call services. We've looked at a couple of different firms. I mean, I think you still have options. But if we do commit to Council Lazo's point, you're really going to rely on the, using the outside counsel, at least for the short term, depending upon how long some people's tenures are. But you have the flexibility, if you're using firms, if you don't like them, you can go somewhere else. If you bring an engineer in, unless you have that just cause or something, you're going to have a problem getting that person out. So it does afford you a lot more flexibility, and the ability to pick and choose engineering firms that you see their strengths and weaknesses, whether it's construction, paving, or water and sewer.
All right, thank you.
I'm next.
Mr. Pioppi, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, you know, in part of this, we might look at the total restructuring, like, should we make Phil operations and deputy director and eliminate a position? I mean, we're top-heavy with those positions compared to other towns. The other part that no one's understanding about this engineering thing is, we're not looking for an engineer to design.
And you're telling yourself you're not really that familiar with unit price jobs. Somebody has to analyze the information that comes in to the Town for pay recs. You have to understand how a unit price job works, what the pay items are and verify the quantities and the math and all of that and act as the owner's rep. You cannot do that with a consultant. The consultant designs the job. Because something administers the job and then they sign up on the pay rec, the Town needs to sign up on the pay rec. And, and so someone has to review it for the Town. You can't do that with on-call people. It'll, first of all, it'll cost a fortune. Second of all, we have to have somebody with some vested interest acting as the owner, working for the Town. They, they don't have to have a PE, but they have to, Matt didn't have a PE. Matt had a lot more engineering aptitude than Heather. You, you just need someone with engineering-type education. That, you guys, we definitely need that. You can't operate without it. Who's going to, we're passing a pay rec, who's going to analyze it?
Okay, thank you.
You guys are, you guys are talking about a world you do not understand. That, that's the whole problem. You, you, everyone's got the right attention, I can see this from me, but you guys are like down here because you talk about what you understand and it's up here. I mean, we, the Town that screwed millions of dollars on Main Street and these various projects are a joke.
Okay.
Okay? We, we need somebody that's going to understand and advocate from the Town and it has to be related to dollars. They have to understand the, the pay items. You have to understand, approve change orders. We, we have, we hired, we hired a new director. I hope he's a great guy. It's a total unknown. And, and I'm sick of seeing self-esteem taken off the chin with incompetence and that's all we're trying, everyone's trying to avoid. Not, not belittle anyone, not. But we, we, obviously, we, we've tolerated it long enough and no matter what the Council says, we're not going to tolerate it any longer. And I don't think that the Council is as well intentioned as they are, understand a tenth of what they need to understand to make some of these decisions.
I freely admit it. Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Um, the Town Manager said very smartly, we don't know what the best solution is and, you know, we are not bound to any one example, right? We could be creative. One of the things I commend the Town for was retaining multiple, uh, engineering firms so that we're not, um, at the behest of one on-call service that they can start taking advantage of us, right? So, for instance, I have a job right now that I'm working on, the mass works for East Main Street. That's going to be, um, in conjunction with the water project happening. And so, we went out for quotes through these engineering firms. We went with the cheaper, that was two-thirds cheaper of the, the ones we have on retainer and they will be the ones that will be that third-party reviewer with regards to the, the pay recs. I, we do hold the engineers that we hire for construction administration, we do hold those engineers to sign off on the pay recs. I, I do appreciate his, his point and I wonder if maybe as an extra layer, we could be doing professional development with some of our staff to be taking some kind of classes to educate themselves on unit pricing. Wentworth has the most amazing construction program, right? We send somebody for, you know, things like that in the meantime while we figure out what the best solution is.
I get it. I get you.
That's just my comment.
All right, hold on, hold on now. Mr. Pioppi, I'll let you speak. Council Dow?
Thank you. Guys, me personally, I'm happy to see all of you here. Why? Because everybody have opinion. You guys work at the DPW. We don't know what's going on. But the only thing I'm mad about it, you guys waited the last minute. You know everything going on? You know what's going on? Nobody came up and have a scheduled meeting. Let me finish, let me finish. None of you put the group together and came saying, "Councillor, we need to talk to you. We have an issue down there. We need to meet with all the Councillor or Town Manager and discuss things how it's supposed to go." This is the second time we bring one of your family from the DPW, your family. When he get here, we come and fight in front of the camera and disappoint the person. This is the only thing I'm sad about it. Not because he's gotten the job. You know, I like all of you. I have no problem. I have no, no business to, to hurt any of you. But it's not fair. Every, it could be tomorrow, you, could be you, could be you, could be you. It's going to happen, the same thing. If you guys don't get together and have a special meeting with the Manager, with the Town Council and discuss where the pain is. We can't, I cannot know if your arm or legs hurt. I don't know if your brain or your ear hurt. You guys are going to come up. You can't just, one person come say, "Oh, this, this is," and the other one say a different story. We're not going to be able to, uh, understand if everyone tell different story. Guys, get together. You're family down there. You're going to work together today, tomorrow. Either if he doesn't get the job or he got it, you're going to be working down there, you're going to drink coffee, you're going to say good morning. He's going to say good morning. But it's not right the way you guys handle things too. It's not only about us, it's you guys.
Okay, Council.
Mister, Mister, why you don't come forward and, and be sitting on, 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 you have that experience and you have all these magic things? Why you don't come forward?
No one ever asked.
No, we did, I did ask you, say, "I don't like it." Why you don't come forward and sit on a board? What's asked in the future? In the future, you have the experts and you give a lot of opinion and I respect that. I don't know how to pave, you're right. But come forward. Not standing from outside and creating a volcano.
I'm forward right now.
Council Dow, Town Employees cannot serve on these committees.
Well, but he can come and say opinion all the time.
But I work for the Town. Joe, we found out yesterday. We're here today.
But this is not only.
We found out yesterday, we're here today. This is all top secret. Nobody heard about this in our building.
You know that issues being going on in that DPW from.
We've had people, yes, not hired, but we had no idea that all this stuff was going on until yesterday.
That's a tough meeting.
We didn't know. We found out yesterday. We're here today at the meeting. I think it's pretty good that four of us showed up. It shows something. Thank you.
All right.
How was that, how was that good employee relationship?
I'm going to go with you next.
Council Dow.
Mr. Pioppi, like, Mr. Pioppi?
I just want to know. I was told outside that we can't talk to Councillors outside of work.
I don't know. I don't know why they can't.
They'll always told you, you don't go down and talk to people. The Department Heads, the top school to report to the Manager.
Oh, that's true.
They have a union, the union reps should talk. You want to get technical, I don't ever follow that rule. I'm a solid guy.
That's true, yeah, all right. Good point, good point.
And they can't come here and make a discussion to you guys technically because they are a union and represented by a union and the Manager doesn't have to listen to them unless it comes through a union. Then if they're not happy with things, they got to file agreements. So, it's a whole long process. This thing, a process of agreements can take a year or longer. So, they have a process.
I'm going to go with the guy behind you, Mr. Pioppi had his hand up.
Seems like this could be a very simple situation here. You're so willing to change your job to make sure somebody gets in, but we don't know about the engineering. So, why wouldn't you just take the, whatever this, the Director's job and make it more engineering-bound instead of looking for a CDL driver that can shovel and do this and that and the other thing? Why don't you just make it a more managerial spot where he's in charge of overseeing the DPW and engineering? Should be fairly simple at that point. You don't lose all the other qualifications. I mean, you're losing a big qualification to try and put somebody in. You don't even have the final word from the Town Council yet. I just think it's very premature and I, as a citizen, I wouldn't want to see this go forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pioppi?
I have a comment about engineering that young lady in front of me, I apologize for not knowing her name, pointed out that we're, we're proud that we hired the low-bid engineer. Having spent my 40-year career frustrated by poor engineering and questioning it and having the answer be, well, it was low bid, I can tell you that is not the place to cut corners. Because the result of that is the quality of work and the designs that we have going on in Town right now. Period.
Okay. I'm going to go with Mr. Julian next.
As, as you know, Counsel, we've had this discussion before about the whole low bid thing. And we've had problems with some of the low bid engineers.
Okay, thank you. All right. What's your pleasure, guys? What do you want to do? Do you want to keep going or do you want to take a vote on this?
Right.
What are we voting on? What, what, what are we talking about? What are we going to vote on?
The motion as it stands right now is, "Review, discuss the revised job description for DPW Deputy Director. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for approval." It was, Mr. La, uh, Mr. Lazo made the motion. Kevin, uh, Mr. Dow, Council Dow seconded it. That is the motion on the table. Council Steve's made a motion to postpone. Mr. Spleen took back his motion to postpone. So, right now?
I'm making a motion to move the, the agenda vote on it to bring it to the Council.
You're not recognized.
Motion to move the question is all discussion. It can vote.
It was someone's going to second.
Only the motion to move the question.
There's a motion and a second to move the question.
I didn't recognize it.
I got a second right here. Move the question.
You recognize them? Oh, man.
All right, I'll allow it. Okay.
I think you like the other one. You have another tent to argue on, so let's do it.
The thing is, and I read Robert's Rules, moving the question is not allowed at a subcommittee level. I've read that in Robert's Rules.
Yeah, but you already discussed it.
It's not allowed at a subcommittee. Not allowed at a subcommittee. You guys want to vote on this? We'll vote on it. All right?
With a motion and a second.
With a motion and a second.
Also a second.
All right. All those in favor of moving it up to the Council, raise your hand.
I'm going to, I'm going to vote to move it.
Voting to move it. Wait.
Moving up to the Council.
That's not what it said. That's not what he said.
I want to vote to move it to the Council.
All right, all those in favor, I'm so sorry. It's been a long meeting, wait. It's over an hour. We haven't even done with one, one.
It's been so long, I forgot what the whole thing was.
I just read it. Are you approving this motion?
Yes.
All right.
The motion?
The motion is, "Review, discuss the revised job description for DPW Deputy Director. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for approval." All those in favor? One, two. Two in favor. All those opposed? Three opposed. So, it's going up to the Council with a negative recommendation. Thank you.
That's how it goes.
Up there, up there, I think.
It goes there anyway.
It's going to go either or.
Exactly what I said.
All right, that's fine. I have no problem with it. All right. Agenda Item Number Seven. Review and discuss the changes to Schedule One. I, Administrative Salary Schedule for Positions Not Covered by Collective Bargaining Agreements. Administrative Department Heads. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for approval. Now, I do have a question about this one. Shouldn't this go to General Government? I mean, this was, I looked, I went back to look and see what other, uh, schedules.
So, that's what we initially thought, uh, but the Inspector was approved here, the, the, the salary for the construction.
No, it wasn't. The, the schedule was not approved. It just bypassed General Government. It went right up. We did not talk about it, though. But I went back to look and General Government usually takes care of schedules, so can we make a motion? Do you want to make a motion to refer this back to General Government?
Make a motion that, uh, this.
The last one is my right up. That's for, is that, which one is that? Is that for the Foreman or for the?
This is, no, this is for our schedules.
We're going to be both of them.
Yeah, but for both of them, so it's actually a both of them.
I mean, it is.
If, if now you, you make up.
Hold on. Council Steve?
I mean, I'm, I'm Gen Gov chair. Um, and it is already here. It technically should have probably gone to Gen Gov, but it's here now.
Okay.
Let's just get it done.
All right.
I mean, one of, one of, well, this is one of those formalities where we sometimes get way, way into the weeds rather than just getting the Gen Gov.
All right, that's fine.
It should have been the Gen Gov, but that's. So, I think Gen Gov's agenda is not long enough with what it is now.
Are there any other, any other discussion on this one? No? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Three? Three in favor? Or you in favor? Oh, no. Two in favor?
Two in favor, two not. One abstaining.
I'm against. You're abstaining, right? Two against. It's going up there. It's two, three, one. Two, four.
No, excuse me, two, two, three.
Two, two, one. Two, two, one. Agenda Item Number Eight. Review, discuss the promotion of Phil Harding to the DPW Director, Deputy Director Position. Entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council approve the Town Manager's recommendation to appoint Phil Harding as DPW Deputy Director.
So move. I'll second it.
All right. Did you want to speak further on this? No?
We've kind of beaten it to death already.
I think we beat it up.
All right. We did. I will, I do want to give just one quick comment is that I am, I am going to vote, I am, I'm going to abstain this again, but it has nothing to do with Phil. It is because of all the sudden stuff I've already stated. I think it's premature. I just, you may end up getting the job and honestly, to what, what you've done in the last couple of months, I hope you do. But we need to see things get done right.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
If this goes to Counsel in the hypothetical, is the, the question to, to make the position gets denied and the appointment is in favor, what happens?
Well, I would say it's moot at that point, correct?
I would think all three of them have to go or none.
All right. Okay, no other further que, uh, comments? All those in, did you have your hand up? No. All right, all those in favor?
I got a, I got a question.
I still don't understand how, without clarifying engineering.
I don't get that.
Exactly.
I, I, I don't, I, I just don't understand this process.
All right, well, we've moved it up to the Council, so come to the Council and ask that question now because we've already approved, set it up with a negative vote. All right. Agenda Item Number Eight.
So, what's the vote for this?
We're voting right now. You voting no or yes?
For what?
This is Agenda Item Number Eight.
They voted yes.
In favor.
To appoint Phil Harding. You're voting yes. How are you voting? You're abstaining? You're abstaining? I'm voting no. All right, so it's a, it passes. It's going to, it's going up. All right, thank you.
Well, it passes with a positive recommendation.
Correct. Tough meeting, I'll tell you right now. Agenda Item Number Nine. Review, discuss the revised job description for Senior Public Works Foreman. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council. Do you need to discuss this at all?
Can I ask why that wasn't also advertised?
Promotion.
It's a promotion. It's the same thing. I'm not going to answer anymore.
I'm just, it's the same questions over and over and over and over.
Yeah, but it's not changing the job description.
There's nothing new that you're asking. It's the same questions.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
That's our answer.
He is of experience. I have to say that he is of experience as he does.
What is, what is the purpose of making this job description?
Did you want to answer that? No?
No. Because I believe if you're just going to give somebody money because they're threatening to go to another town, you're setting a bad precedent and we're probably all going to put our notices in so we can get more money.
Okay.
We probably shouldn't. And there's been other employees that have lucked here that were not offered more money.
All right, thank you. Uh, any more discussion here? No? All right, all those in favor? One, two.
Abstain.
Two. How are you voting?
Yes.
Three? To one. I'm voting no. It's going up. Three to one to one. Agenda Item Number Ten. Review, discuss changes of Schedule One. Seven, PW Supervisory and PW Schedule for Trade, Craft, Labor Positions Not Covered by Collective Bargaining Agreements. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So move.
All right? I'm going to just go right to a vote on this. All those in favor? One, two in favor? Are you abstaining? How are you voting? All right, three to one. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Review, discuss the promotion of Glenn Ethier to the Senior Public Works Foreman Position. Entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council approve the Town Manager's recommendation to appoint Glenn Ethier as a Senior Public Works Foreman.
So move.
Lazo Dow. Anything you want to say on this one? No? Okay. All right, all those in favor? One, two in favor? You're in favor? All right. You're abstaining? I'm voting no. Thank you. Sorry to move this along now. Number Twelve. Review, discuss awarding tank mixer replacements which will replace storage tanks, mixer, motors for Breckneck and Mass Avenue Storage Tanks to Underwater Solutions Incorporated. Entertain a motion to Town Council. All right? I believe Phil should be here somewhere. Sorry, I meant, I met Steve, yeah.
Steve, you hiding out there somewhere?
You're up.
I'm not sure.
The tank.
So, um, in our two, um, storage tanks, the Breckneck Road and the Mass Ave, the tanks have a, um, electric mixer in the bottom of them. It's basically a electric motor with a, um, special paddle on top to keep the tanks blended and keep them from building up ice in the winter. They have about a five-year lifespan. One is five years and one is six years old and they're both failed. Um, so I'm going to offer prices to three vendors to replace them all. And I'm happy to say the lower bid is not the vendor that apparently had four mixers.
Guys, I still people talking.
Because I believe these mixers may be of a higher quality and we're getting a better price, so I'm going to ask about more tonight to approve that replacement.
Okay. Any questions? More questions? Go ahead, Council Steve.
Steve, I'm just curious. You, you mentioned that the life span is five years. Is that, is that standard? Steve, I'm just curious, you, you mentioned that the life span is five years, is that, is that standard? I mean, because I would think that five years is really short.
It is, it's, it's a, it's a two-twenty horse motor submerged in a two-milligallon tank, that runs twenty-four seconds. So it's got a lot of hours on it.
You can't change the doors. Or you can, unless somebody can put a sign on the door, it's door opens.
You can't close the doors, no way. I'll open it for the.
Put a sign on it, so like.
No!
You can't do that.
It gets a little. You can open a little bit.
If you have, if you put a sign on the door, they can, you can say that people can come in.
There must be an exception when it's see-through, no?
I personally have never seen that before.
As long as it's unlocked, I think your principal's just supposed to be unlocked.
Alright, go ahead, are you, are you done? Alright, all those in favor? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Review discuss a transfer for twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars from number six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-nine-one-two-five-zero Water Reserve Fund to number six-one-zero-four-five-zero-dash-five-eight-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-two-three-five-eight-zero Water System Capital to fund replacement of the tank mixer in the Breakneck Road, Mass Avenue Storage Tanks. Entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Lozo, second by Spleen, go ahead.
So again, um, we, we, this wasn't on this year's operating budget.
Right.
So I'm just asking for a transfer from our, uh, reserve account. We're more than halfway through the year, we haven't pressed that reserve account yet. Uh, I thought this would be a good use of funds now, so we don't complete our regular systems budget for a, uh, an unscheduled expenditure.
Alright. Any questions? None? All those in favor? Motion passes, five to zero. Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Review discuss a transfer for ninety thousand from Fund Number Zero-Eight-Four-Two Capital Stabilization Fund to Project Number Six-Four-Eight-Four-Seven DPW Purchase of Sweeper to cover increased cost of sweeper replacement. Entertain a motion.
So move.
To Town Council.
Second.
Uh, this would be Phil.
I'm here, just took him over?
No, I'm right here. I stepped my way back in.
I will say about this one. Oh, I'm sorry, Phil.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Sorry, I just, I didn't want to make them get up.
Go ahead.
As, as you guys know, the price increase of a lot of things have been happening over the last couple of years. Um, we put in for a capital to get a new sweeper, and the price of the sweeper went from three-hundred thousand to three-hundred-and-ninety thousand, and I can, I begged this, um, salesman very kindly to hold this until at least the fourteenth. This price, because it is scheduled to go back up. And it's actually scheduled to go back up tomorrow, but he's willing to hold it for the three-ninety if we get the approval for this transfer to, so we can get our sweeper that is very in dire need.
Okay. I will say this, that at the Capital Planning Committee, I did mention that we approved this last spring for three-hundred thousand, no one bought the sweeper, now it's up to three-ninety.
No, well, we went to go buy it at, last year when we were approved, after we were voted, it, it skyrocketed up then.
Alright.
It was actually at, I think it was at like three-eighty-three then, so it's, it's gone up, and it's scheduled to go up another twenty-two thousand.
Alright, Council down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the sweeper was broken, did that fix?
No, that is not fixed, that is, that's a twenty-seven-year-old sweeper.
I know, but, it could be a hundred years old, but when the last time we spoke, was it ord, part was ordered, and it's supposed to be running, it's not.
Parts were ordered, and then as we fixed one part, another part has been, been gone. I'm more than willing to take it to your shop and have you go through it if you want. No problem, we'll tow it down then.
Joe, maybe fix those two?
You get that thing sweet, maybe we'll get five grand for it, we're gonna trade.
Hey Joe, maybe you should buy it.
No, no, but you know, bring it down, I will try to fix it, then give it, give it to the town, I have no problem.
Council Steve, did you have something?
We, we currently have two sweaters, right?
One and a half.
One, one is.
Hold on, hold on, we, we currently have two, right?
Yes.
One is broken, the other is operational?
Yeah.
It was out the other day, good.
Yeah, I, I got one more thing to say.
And I understand that the other one's twenty-seven years old, it's due. I understand, I just wanted to make sure we still have it.
Yes. And another thing too, is this, the new sweeper we're getting is for the MS four compliant also, it does the vacuuming, and it takes out the catch bases, and all that stuff.
That's good.
So, I'm sorry, I just.
No, but that's good, thank you. Council Steve?
Phil, how, how old is that other one?
Excuse me?
How old is the other?
Twenty-seven.
The newer one, I can't leave it.
The one that's still one?
I think that one's ten.
At least that.
What's the average, like, what's the life?
That's a pellet spanner.
I can barely hear you.
What's the lifespan here from the?
The lifespan is usually roughly about ten years. So we got twenty-seven out of one, so I think we got, got our money back plus some on that one. We might be able to get, you know, another ten more years out of it, Mr. Tal can fix it.
Alright. Nothing else, we're gonna vote, all those in favor? So moved, five to zero.
Just reminder that up at the top, it has to pass by two.
Two-thirds. Good, good point, I'll write that down. Alright, review discuss a transfer of eighty-six thousand, thirty-two dollars from Fund Number Zero-Eight-Four-Two Capital Stabilization Fund to Project Number Six-Four-Eight-Four-Nine DPW Clamshell Catch Basin Cleaner for Swap Loader to cover increased costs for catch basin, entertainable.
So move.
Second.
Go ahead, Phil.
Alright, this is another, again, one of those things that we did approve for, for capital last year, it's, um, it goes on to our hook trucks, it's a catch basin cleaner, because ours is kind of in a failing state here, and we can't seem to get quite everything working well with it, so we can just take this and we can use it with our hook trucks, and it's, it's universal between any of our little trucks that we do. To do the catch basin cleaner as well as everything else.
Okay, then this is another one that the cost went up?
Yes. It went up, as you can see, we approved for, I think, a hundred and, like, a hundred and twenty, and went up eighty-six thousand. And that was at that same price when we did go to purchase it, so it has not changed that price.
Alright. Go ahead, Council Steve.
I was hard, you mentioned that, at the previous item, you mentioned that that can do catch basin cleaning too, why do we need to?
You need both machines, because the, the sweeper is a vacuum, it'll vacuum everything else out, and the catch basin takes out all the sediment and, and all the sticks and debris that the vacuum can't take out. Yes, and a deep sum versus regular as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
To you, Mr. Chairman, Phil. Phil, um, you said you can use it on a hu, one of our hook trucks?
Yes.
Okay, so what's gonna happen to the one that we have?
The catch basin truck, we're gonna kinda.
Keep it?
Keep it, or we might end up putting it for surplus, so, I don't know, might the mechanic decide on that one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Nothing else?
Is the truck itself, the stalling itself good, like cabin chassis?
They haven't a lot of the leaking issues. A lot of, um, hydraulic issues, along with everything else. The, the motor itself is in very good shape, yes.
So the truck is good?
The truck is good, but everything else is bad, and you can't just take that, and it was a whole, it would've cost more money to have that refurbished and brought back with all new, than what it'd be just to buy one of these that we can use on three different vehicles, so.
Yeah. Alright. Okay, if there's nothing else, all those in favor? You're not, thank you. Uh, Agenda Item Number Sixteen. I think this is you, Mr. Chairman, you've been very patient.
She's been waiting all this time.
Review and discuss applying for rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability Equity Raise Grant for no more than eleven million, and commit seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in water and sewer enterprise funds to complete the project. Entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Second.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Would you like me to speak about it?
If you want.
If you'd like to?
So, it's to modernize Hamilton, we applied last year, it, um, last year we asked for about ten million, I've been waiting for the engineers to give me a number on what I should ask for. Um, I'm not hearing back from them, asked for eleven in case prices had gone up. Much to my surprise, they actually went conservative on the numbers, and they also found, um, that they could correct down an item, uh, in the quantities, to reduce it down to around seven-point-seven. Uh, so we're gonna leave it at the motion it is, to ensure that we, we're asking for enough. Um, but, uh, when I go to apply, I may only end up applying for seven-point-seven million, with the commitment from Water Sewer, thank, I, I want to thank out loud the whole team at DPW, you know, they talk about they operate as a team, absolutely. Terra doesn't get enough recognition for helping out with all the paperwork and, and stuff. And Phil is amazing, I can call him on the fly anytime and get his assistance. The Steves, absolutely. And so, Steve Griveau has been incredibly helpful to me since day one, so everybody came together with an estimate for seven-fifty for water and sewer, it breaks out two, two-fifty for water, five-hundred for sewer. Um, and then the, the majority of the project will be two, do full-depth reclamation, uh, new and reuse existing granite curbing, new cement concrete blocks and jobs, new ADA pedestrian ramps, drainage upgrades, just, uh, sewer manhole structures, decorative lighting, traffic signal upgrades at intersections with main, new landscaping, including tree shrubs, new trash receptacles, and bicycle racks.
So the raise grant, up, hold on, the raise grant, that is the federal infrastructure money?
That is, and we should be very proud of ourselves that we're going for this money, few towns, as, you know, or smaller entities like us, went for this money last year, so we went for it, and then we were given a debrief and feedback that said we had a good chance, but that water and sewer couldn't be included, so we had to exclude that this year, and then we had to just polish up the, the narrative about the safety. But otherwise, they think it's a great project, mostly because of the location.
Okay.
They're all about with the equity part of this, right? We, that is our highest percentage low moderate income census tract, so it was an easy way for us to potentially qualify.
Council Steve, you're talking about Hamilton, right?
It's, yeah, Hamilton up to hook.
Okay, okay. Um, and, now... If, if, would, would it be possible for, if we were to get the eleven million, but they're covering it seven million, that we can use leftover money for something else?
No, every dollar has to be accounted for in the quantities.
Okay.
Yes, and so we would only apply for what their opinion of probable costs is.
Alright, so? Okay, anybody else? No? All those in favor? Passes, five to zero. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Do we want to update on construction inspector, or would you like to just pass over that? We have a question about the construction inspector?
Yes.
Have we, are you interviewing people?
We've interviewed everyone that, um, that were picked for, to come in for interviews, we actually had a great response, we had close to twenty resumes.
Okay.
Very good response.
Alright.
And we picked our top five, we, uh, we currently made a job offer, and we're waiting, uh, to see if the person is accepting. So, we'll let you know.
Alright.
If the offer's accepted.
Is that good? Alright, thank you.
Oh, but can I just bring up one point from your earlier part of the agenda, when you were talking about, um, bids for engineers coming in low? Just, just to reinforce, these are only of the four that are on retainer, that we get the quotes between, because we don't want price gouging by one relationship, and so it's a very good strategy.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
Corey?
Yes, they've already approved all.
Do you want to say something about the construction inspector?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead, Corey.
Some of your items are on the agenda, too, they're picked.
Go ahead.
We all set? So, um, I think I've already killed my opportunity, so I'm gonna move forward with that. Um, in regards to the construction inspector position, and I'm speaking as an applicant for, uh, that position that has been ongoing for ten months. Um, I have a couple of questions, but the first one I want answered is, uh, I'm wondering if Part One, Chapter One-Forty-Nine, Section Twenty-Six was followed in regards to, um, the hiring of any position in the town, but specifically the two that I applied for, um, from the beginning back in April.
Okay.
So, we, we follow fair and equitable practices here when we hire people. The hi, there's a team that looks at and reviews at the resumes, and I've explained this to you, um, privately when you've called me, um, and, um, they pick who they want to bring in for an interview. We interview the folks that they feel are qualified for the position, and then we make the job offer.
Okay, so can I just quote out of this, and I'm only asking? Um, and I'm just gonna quote this for you to understand where I'm coming with this, um, and this has to do with me being a veteran, hundred percent disabled. Um, I am a veteran, twelve years of Army, and I am one-hundred percent disabled through the VA, and I have paperwork to back that up. So, um, public works by the Commonwealth or by county, town, authority, or district, by persons contracting, subcontracting for such work, so on and so forth, preference shall be given to citizens of the Commonwealth who have been residents of their Commonwealth for at least six months at commencement of their employment, who are veterans as defined in Clause Forty-Third. Uh, Forty-Third of Section Seven, uh, Chapter Four, and who are qualified to perform the work, uh, to which the employment relates. Um, with such preference, preference shall be given to service-disabled veterans, and secondly, to citizens of the Commonwealth generally, who have been residents of the Commonwealth for the last six months at commencement of their employment. And if they cannot be obtained sufficient numbers, then to citizens of the United States. Um, so this is, this is mass general laws right here, um, and I'm in speaking in regards to, um, I was told that I was overqualified for one position, I was.
No, let him, let him finish.
I received a phone call from HR stating why I didn't receive the, the job the first time. And the first time, we now know it was an inside thing that happened, I, I'm not, I don't know.
I don't know what you mean.
Specific.
It's all speculation.
I was told.
Just leave that out of it, please.
That's fine, I'll, I'll, I'll take that comment back.
Okay.
I got a phone call in regards to why I wasn't picked, um, and in that was told from HR that I was overqualified for the position, and I belong in a, a supervisor's position, and this position doesn't have any supervisory oversight. And I was then told that the director's position would be more fitting. So, that happened, this was way back in May. And, um, since then, I've been asked to resubmit my, my, my resume and my, um, job application three times in the last ten months, which I've done so, uh, including cover letters. So, knowing that I fit the qualifications for the jobs that I went for, and knowing mass laws in regards to service-disabled veterans, I'd like to know why I was passed over specifically, uh, this time, when I was qualified for the position before, and now that it was revised and not taken out, uh, actually taken out, um, some of the other experience level that s, other applicants should have, so now I'm even more qualified for the position. Um, I understand thoughts of qualification, but put in respective of actual qualifications, I qualify for the position. So therefore, why, why did it happen? And I'm asking that because I've heard no communication from HR.
Alright.
In regards to a phone call, except for a phone call that was made. I did try calling HR five times that day, and I was not able to get ahold of anybody until six fifteen PM. Um, so, I'm wondering where I can get those questions answered, and the only place I thought I'd be able to get the questions answered was here in an open forum, um, where I hope the truth can come forward.
I'm gonna let them either decide to answer, or if you would like to answer it privately, I will let you do it either way.
So, Michael, do you want it, because you, you want it to, you don't want to answer that either?
I think it's appropriate forum.
No, I, I think maybe, I think an appropriate way to go would be a letter or something, and, and let him know why he was passed over.
I, I think, if, correct.
No, you're either gonna talk.
The public has had conversations with it.
Okay, however you want to deal with it, then.
Every time I, something is said, it gets twisted and, and out of context, and, at, at this, it, it, it's not doing any good.
Alright, I'll take these.
I think you're speculating my response, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct.
And applying that, that we haven't, that the other candidates may not be that much disabled.
Adrian, you're either gonna answer it or you're not.
I'm not, I'm not gonna answer it.
Then fine, we're not gonna talk about it.
So how can I get these questions answered?
I don't know, I guess you'll have to, um, I don't know what you're gonna do. Tell you the truth, I don't think it's right either, but I'm not gonna make them answer if they don't want to answer.
And, and I'm okay with, and I think not answering and, and, and speculating on my responses is unjust. I haven't created any problems for this subcommittee, or for, um, anybody in this room for the last ten months, I've been waiting to do my homework, trying to apply for a job, and I know that I was qualified for. That was made and revised, and doing what I was asked to do, and yet, now I have proof of, of veteran preference, being a one-hundred percent disabled veteran, and I can't get an answer, sitting in a veteran's room, at that, it's all just coincidental, but why can't I get an answer? Why is HR or the Town Manager, through you, Mr. Chairman, not answering this question?
I don't have a que, an answer for you, I'm gonna let them decide if they want to answer or not. I don't have an.
And they don't want answers, and I'm asking why, I need an answer on why this is happening.
You're not getting an answer this evening, that's the answer.
Excuse me?
You're not getting an answer this evening.
I haven't gotten an answer in ten months, so when can I get an answer?
Can't tell you that, Mr. Chairman. Can't tell you that, Mr. Chairman. I think you've been given answers. You asked to meet with me on more than one occasion.
Mr. Town Manager, don't continue this.
Well, I'm just telling them, he's got all the answers. He's, he's asked.
Mr. Manager, you yourself said I was qualified for the DPW director's position.
You asked to apply for it. I said, you can apply if you want.
Alright, that's it.
He said he made a comment.
We're on our way. This is not an order. We're not arguing back and forth, okay? I agree, you're, you're very highly competent, qualified, but I'm not gonna have an argument, so that's it.
I'm not trying to argue.
That's it. I'm done with this.
To things that have been said and done that haven't been done.
They're not gonna answer you tonight. Alright, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else on this? No? Alright. Uh, discussion of road improvements in town. Go ahead, Kevin.
I asked you to put this on. Thank you for putting it on. I just, it's in regards to the West Street project. I was walking out a couple of weeks ago, and I don't know, we spent a couple million dollars on that. And Mike, I, I was under the assumption we put a new gas line under that road a couple of years ago, but I guess it was a water line.
It was water.
So my question is, if we're like doing that extensive type of work, we were gonna sidewalks, sewer, water, all that? I think it's kind of foolish. That gas line is a steel line that, I don't know how old that thing is. I hate to see what happened on Dresser Street happen on West Street. Two weeks after we paved, the gas company's ripping it up.
He wants to know what's going on on West Street with the...
So West, we got multi-million dollars we're spending on that project. From new water line, new sewer line, pavement curve, everything. When I was walking it, I thought we put a new gas line under there a couple of years ago. It was a water replacement we did from South Street, uh, the middle of the school. So my thing is, is if we're spending this kind of money, I don't want to happen what happened to Dresser Street, I think prior to you. We did all this work, we repaved it, and two weeks later, the gas company comes and rips it up. Is there a way, I'm just throwing it out there, is there a way we can contact the gas company and say, hey?
I'm sure we could, because I think they.
It's food for thought.
They're coming back in the spring to give us work.
I mean, it's food for thought.
You're saying before file payment, you'd like to see if they can come in, if they have to make any work?
I mean, that's an old gas, uh, steel line, I believe, that's under there. I hate to go through all that work in, you know, six months, a year down the road, they're ripping it up.
I'm gonna let Phil answer. Go ahead, Phil.